Chris Jensen, are you good to go?
I'm here, good to go.
Hey, if you want to put up the colors, we'll salute them. Good evening, everyone. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, folks, this is the March 23 meeting of the Town of Canada Planning Board. First, I want to apologize to any of our applicants and guests that tried to join us at our last meeting two weeks ago. We had a pickup with the Zoom and I guess fortunately, that's the first time it's really happened in the year plus that we've been doing Zoom meetings. So I guess we're fortunate to have it happen, but unfortunately it happened two weeks ago for the folks who are on the agenda for that meeting. So everything's been carried over to this evening and we will proceed accordingly. Let me call the role, Brian Stachuk.
I am present.
Gary Holmes.
Here.
Bob La Course.
Here.
Man the vein Lake it.
Here.
And I'm Chuck Euler. Those are the board members. We're also joined by John Robitella, our recording secretary. We also have Lance Brabant, who's representing our town engineers.
I'm here, thank you.
And also Chris Nadler, who is the planning board attorney. And at the controls tonight, as always, is Chris Jensen. Thanks, Chris, for helping out. So for those of you, and I think a lot of you people have sat in on our Zoom meetings, but for those of you who have not, we are here doing this virtually. So that means we have to go through some procedures that we follow to try to minimize the distractions. I will ask each applicant to make a presentation on his or her application. Upon the completion of their presentation, we'll open it up to board members for their comments and questions. Once that is complete, I will open the audience, I will open the discussion up to the audience. Anyone who would like to speak on behalf of the ask questions or speak on behalf of the applicant, that would be the proper time to do so. And then we'll consider the application in terms of resolutions regarding seeker, if it applies, and the actual application for site plan subdivision, et cetera. So that being said, the only other thing we ask is if you do want to speak, please give us your name, address, and so we can keep track of your attendance. And with that, I will now call on anyone who would like to speak on behalf of an issue that is not on the agenda this evening. We call it privileges of the floor. If someone would like to speak, now's the time to do so. Otherwise, we will carry on to our discussions as listed on the agenda. Anyone want to speak? Okay, same, we're all here for the applications before us. So first application is a continuation of a hearing. It's been ongoing for Mark's Engineering, representing William Metros, owner of property at 5100 Bristol Road. And Mr. Metros is here this evening to seek an amended preliminary and final subdivision approval for his property of 7.426 acres, where he intends to subdivide into 11 lots. And the initial subdivision was preliminary approved back on October, I think it was the 27th. The agenda says the 7th, but I think it was the 27th. So with that, I will open the hearing again. And Brendan, are you going to take the ball?
Yeah, yeah, thanks Chuck. Hey, you guys are all pretty familiar with this, the discussions that was had last time was the sidewalk on the north or the western side of the road continuing all the way around the cul-de-sac till lot 10. So we've done that. We've also submitted a copy of the language to put into the conservation easement. On March 9, we set that in. I noticed it was just posted today under the website. There was a narrative, basically, what you asked for Chuck was the land management plan, how we plan to keep the conserved area and how we plan to manage it for forestry and whatnot. So I don't know, Chris, if you've got that, if you want to bring that up, or if the board has that, that they've had a chance to review that or not.
Well, let's, to keep some order, Brendan, let's go through a two-step process here. Let's do the amended preliminary subdivision. So let's look at how this is different from what you originally approved, or what we originally approved. And if you would go through that, then we can at least get that on the record and we can take action on that.
Thank you. Yeah. So the amended, amended subdivision plan differs from the approved preliminary subdivision by we added one residential lot, one more residential lot on the cul-de-sac, which is got, so now it has three on the cul-de-sac versus before it only had two. That allowed us to shorten the road by 70 feet approximately, which reduces the amount of maintenance, reduces that the town's going to take on, reduces the amount of expense upfront for the developer. And it also still provides the, for the 10 lots, the 10 houses that we are proposing, so, and the 11th conserve lot. So we thought it was a win-win situation and I, that was a big change.
Okay, well, yeah, you obviously shortened the cul-de-sac. You took the trail out that was on lot 11, removed that, took off the
Yep.
Trail that was in the back. You, oh, you extended the sidewalk as we requested all the way across the frontage of lot 10. So it goes across the entire frontage of the lots, one through, one through 10. Let's see, you removed the evergreens or the buffer along the
Yep, that's correct.
Hammocks.
Chuck, yep.
Yeah, we
There was evergreen screening along the eastern side of the property between the hammocks. We chose to leave the natural buffer that's there because it actually continues on to the hammocks property for ways in it and remove those evergreens.
Okay, so those were the changes from the approved plan. Does the board have any questions on those particular changes or anything else about this revised plan?
This is Gary. I don't, I don't have any objections really to the, to the revised plan. I do want to make, I did want to make a note, though, in your conservation notes, which I think are on sheet two. There are two, and I, I'm having trouble pulling them up here on my own here. But there are two instances there in your, in those notes that refers to the trail being a part of this plan. That, so when you remove the trail, you didn't remove the, remove that from the conservation notes that are on sheet two. I don't know if you want to do that, if we need to do that.
Yeah, I'm open for a condition that we remove the trail from the subdivision plan, I think is what you're mentioning, right?
It's, the screen's too, too small to read them here, but somewhere. No, it's not in this, it's not in the standard notes. There was something called conservation notes. You can find that. Not there either. There it is. So I think on
Yep.
There's two places here. I gotta find them again. Right there, on four, the third sub-paragraph. So moved, a public access trail will be provided for the enjoyment of the surrounding community.
Yeah, we can remove that.
There, and also it's, I think somewhere above, have to look at it. There's two, there's two mentions of it. I'm trying to find out what the other one is. Oh, on number two. 2A2. This is trail system, which will allow for public access. So I think the notes probably should be revised to remove mention of the public trail system.
That's fine.
Other than that, I don't have any. I don't have any comments on this. I do, I do want to talk about the conservation easement plan. I don't know if you want to hold off on that Chuck, till, till later? Chuck, did you go on mute, Chuck?
I will say, Brendan, I didn't have any problems. I'm glad to see you put the sidewalk all the way around. And I didn't see any problems with your plan as of today. I do, like Gary's mentioned, would like to talk about the management of the of that area in the back there, on that letter that I received today.
And this is Amanda. I don't see Chuck on my participant list anymore.
Yeah, I think we lost them.
Brendan?
Vice Chairman, start, start running the meeting.
I'm here. If the lawyer would stop interrupting me. So I think I'll try to pick up on Chuck's lead. I believe that we can hold off on the conservation easement language if we can move on the preliminary and then final. I think if that's the process, and I think, I think that's what Chuck was referring to in the two-stage. Maybe let, talking about, but he is here now and I will leave it up to him. But I'm ready to move forward on prelim and final at Chuck's leadership. Now, welcome back Chuck. Chuck now. Chuck, everybody, Chuck.
Like, I had to say, I had to say, I hope we didn't have any snafus, but we did. Okay, I did anyway. Sorry, folks. All right, where are we? Did you approve both of subdivisions?
Yeah, all set Chuck.
Seems to be okay. With the exception of a little discussion on a conservation management plan. I was just about to say, for everybody's benefit, Chuck and I discussed this. The document that Brendan Mark submitted is enough for me to prepare a full conservation easement that the applicant, you know, that can be conditioned that the applicant sign and file it before final signatures. And if we can come to a consensus on what should be included in the conservation management plan for lot 11, then we can also prepare that with the applicant and have them execute that prior to final signatures.
Okay. That sounds, sounds good. Again, to go back in the process that we were following before I was rudely interrupted by my computer crashing. We were talking about the amended preliminary plan. I think Gary was speaking and not to rehash everything, but I think you were okay with it, Gary. Was there anyone else on the board that had any concerns about the amended preliminary plan?
I should, I did not have any problems, but just with the management plan.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I had some minor questions, Brendan, and in terms of the roadway cross-section. It was, it was a little tough to figure out from your typical section on the, on the detail as to what you're, it looked like you're going to have rolled curves on both sides of the road.
Oh, you would call them gutters, right? Country gutters or country curve gutters on either side, concrete.
Okay, the, yeah, the, the details shown were kind of generic and didn't show the, the gutters on both sides.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, sorry, sorry Chuck. The gutter will be on the, the western side of the road, the proposed road. And then on the eastern side of the proposed road will be a shoulder.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's what you were showing. Okay.
Yep.
All right. It was tough to tell. I know, I know, we try to avoid any sanitary sewer manholes or any type of manhole in the sidewalks. I know the sidewalks were very close to the alignment of the sewer on that west side. So just make sure you don't have a manhole in a concrete sidewalk.
Okay. Well, those are clean outs, but yeah, we'll just pump those out. No problem. You say, is there a particular lot or?
No, I just know it was running, they're running parallel to each other. A sanitary sewer and one or two locations that almost look like the the manholes were very close to the sidewalk.
Yeah, just outside. Yep.
Okay, take care of that. Appreciate it. See, lot 11, and we talked about that. I know Chris had asked, and this came up while I was gone, about having monuments placed at the corners of the conservation easement. Of some sort of delineation, so it's, it's clear to all parties. Where the, where the where the conservation easement exists. Have we concluded to leave it as two lots, lot 10 and lot 11? Lot 11 being the conservation easement, or I know, Chris, you had some concerns if the lots be joined as one lot or that there remain as two.
It really seems to make sense to me to join them. If you ever want to separate them, you can with planning board approval. But I'll defer to the board on that and Chris Jones.
Our town doesn't commit open space to be on a developed lot, so we would have to go to the variance route.
No, the planning board can waive that.
Okay.
I guess I would, I, I guess, this is Ryan. I guess I would propose to waive that requirement. I feel like we've that this is in the, showing good stewardship with, the applicant has really, I felt, gone through a lot with this plan. I think that this, I feel like this issue was brought up over the last several meetings. And with it being a separate lot, that it could be managed better, in my, in my opinion. I feel that if it's in private ownership, it could be managed better according to the conservation easement, especially with that laid out so well. But I don't know if we're still, I guess Chuck, are we, are we talking about the conservation easement? Because I feel like that would be important to talk about that with this lot 11.
Well, I want to get into that a little more on the final plan. But I think just for the purposes of the preliminary plan, I want to make sure we want to keep this as two lots. Because that's what we'd be approving. And I personally like the two lots better. I think it gives you a little more flexibility in terms of, and if we can waive it as a board, I would certainly recommend that, as you said, Ryan.
So just, just to be clear, leaving it as a separate lot doesn't require any waiver.
Oh, okay. All right, very good.
I guess my, my opinion on this, I mean, to me, it all comes down to who is actually going to do that maintenance of lot 11. And to me, I'm, I mean, there's, there's maybe some forestry things that have, that can happen and shrubs and things, whatever. But I'm, I'm actually more concerned about the portion of lot 11 that is along the road. And it's across from everybody's houses. That has to be maintained from Bristol Road all the way down that little strip of land till it goes, you know, to the cul-de-sac and a little beyond.
Oh.
And so to me, the big thing is who's going to, who's going to maintain that? If it is a separate lot and the way the easement is written up according to the document we saw today, that lot that easement is given to the town, I don't think the town's going to want to maintain all that. So we need to figure out who's going to maintain it. If it is somehow tied to the owner of lot 10, then we have to make sure that that owner of lot 10, if it gets sold at some point in time or whatever, has the understanding that they are liable or whatever the right term is, they're responsible for maintaining that. If it is a separate lot, I'm somewhat a little bit concerned that they can just say, you know, screw it. What are you going to do? You're going to find me a little bit, you know, the lot is not nearly as valuable as lot 10 that has a house on it. So if it is, if those lots were combined and the lot 10 owner understood that a portion now of his lot 10 as part of lot 10, he needs to maintain that. I think the town would have more leverage on that owner should, you know, the, that, that portion start to degrade. So I guess I'm kind of along with Chris Nadler that, to me, it maybe makes sense to combine. But I, I guess, Ryan, I'd like to hear from you on how you think it can be better maintained if it's a separate lot. Over. Okay, thanks Gary, and I appreciate all your concerns and I don't disagree with them at all. I guess in the experience we've had the last several years on the planning board, when these conservation easements are tied to shared ownership or on somebody's private property, it has really become a management nightmare, I think, for the town to try to enforce those certain rules. So if that lot was separate from all the other lots, then it would be tied to the owner of the lot to be responsible for that according, according to code enforcement or whoever is the owner or wherever that, that, that parcel is deeded to. So that would be, the onus would be on the owner of that parcel rather than constantly having an applicant that would either own 10 or 9 or like, and come and say, well, I don't want, I didn't know that. I didn't, it would just make it, it seems to me, it would make it very clear and the, it would be better communication for the town. Those are kind of my thoughts. Does that make sense to you? Over. Okay, I guess Chris Jensen, from a, from an enforcement perspective, it does it, is it better one way or the other? If it was a separate lot or tied to or part of lot 10, from your perspective, what are you thinking?
Perspective, either way kind of works. The big thing is, just like we do on a big subdivision, we have a stormwater maintenance agreement that gets signed, it's filed with the deed, filed with the county. And whoever owns that property is responsible for maintaining it. And if we have to step in and maintain it, then in that agreement, it says it gets billed back to the property owner.
And that's exactly what I was thinking would go into the land management plan. So that, let me just address Ryan, your concern. And it's the town's concern as well, in terms of enforcing conservation easements. And the town has a bad taste in its mouth from older subdivisions that have deed restrictions or conservation easements to nobody. In our modern era of the town, we have made them enforceable by the town. So if you have a conservation easement on your property, Chris Jensen can go and say, whoa, you just cut down all those trees. Here's a giant fine. Or we're taking you to court to go replant those trees. There is an enforcement mechanism now. And my concern with having it on a separate lot is that the owner of lot 10 will eventually say, well, screw this. I'm just not going to pay the property taxes. And then this lot winds up on the town's, as an asset of the town, in town ownership or county ownership. And we don't want to maintain it. And if the owner of lot 10 then cuts trees on the adjacent property, we don't have any mechanism to enforce that. We don't have a mechanism to find that person because we won't have caught caught the, in the act. But if it's one lot, you're responsible for what happens on your property. That's my concern, is that lot 11 will eventually be abandoned by the owner of lot 10. And then what is, what's the town going to do?
So I agree and and I, I don't want this, this conversation to really explode, but this is a conservation subdivision, is that correct? That's how they were allowed a couple more lots, right? Brendan, is that correct?
Yeah, this is a conservation subdivision.
And this is one of the nightmares about conservation subdivisions. These are hidden in a nice, beautiful name that everybody wants to get happy about. But conservation subdivisions are, have really proven to be nightmares for our town. This is a prime example of that. And so we, in order for this individual to get a couple more lots in a high-density area, right near a lot of high-density areas, right near the hospital, we tried to go one route. It was denied by the town board to get high-density. This was another route. This is the only options they had without the support of the town. This is, and here we have this conservation substance. So I don't want to, now looking at the free market, if we do that with lot 10, that's great for now, but if another owner comes along, the, the idea that we have to enforce this with new owners, it just seems like a nightmare. And I honestly really do believe that lot 11, if left into the free market, there may be somebody that wants an open space easement. Number one, it's not going to have a lot of value on the market. Maybe somebody in the city would like a place to go hiking with their children and walk their dog for $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 and be willing to clean out the lot, I guess. It's one option to kind of keep open rather than tying it to lot 10 and going through that same thing we've dealt with in years past.
Well, Ryan, it could be even, it could be even a member of this cul-de-sac that could want that. It doesn't have to be lot 10, right?
So Absolutely. It could be any, it could be, if I lived in lot 1 and all of a sudden I knew that I could take my bikes and my children and have picnics on lot 11, it was never going to be developed. You know, and, and nothing's to say that if it's a separate lot, whoever lives in lot 10 can, can buy it. They have the right, if they, because if I lived in lot 10, I would love lot 11. I would gladly take care of that and steward that property according to the conservation easement.
Let's give it to you. Developer can sell it for more because it's going to be a bigger lot.
I think that's speculation. I think that's spec, too much speculation, I think. Well, Ryan, I think you've got a little speculation that there's going to be somebody that might want to buy that too.
And I'll tell you, initially, lot 10 is going to own it. Lot 10 is never going to sell it to some stranger because it's right next door. For $20,000, lot 10 isn't going to want people on that property next to them because they're going to have bonfires in the middle of the night and they're going to have rowdy music or build a skyscraper. That's the kind of thing people worry about when selling property next door to them. Is the developer here?
Yes.
Could the developer speak to that?
Tabitha?
I'm unmuting. I'm here.
And Tabitha, just so you know, we're, we're talking about, my concern is 50 years from now. You know?
Yep. So, I mean, I think it's a, a thing that everyone has been kind of beating themselves up for, for, since November. I mean, it was my understanding that it was one lot and then it was two lots. And then, you know, now here we are still kind of putting a turban on our heads that we're trying to figure out what it can be or who wants it or how, how that's going to, how that's going to play out. And I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's very hard to discuss. And you all heard that my father intends to live there and maintain it and, but, but I hear you logically, you know, I don't know, he's 82, how long will he live there? But the next buyer would see the charm in it and, I mean, I personally like it as one lot. I want it to be, you know, I personally like it as one lot. I, I want it to be, you know. How it's ever going to play out best for everybody. But I, I think that whomever buys lot 10 and is responsible for lot 11 will maintain the integrity. I, I don't see it any other way.
We're, 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 we're just trying to get it approved. So that's why we split it out. Whatever, what, what does the board want here?
I, just for the record, I really don't, I'm just trying to help the applicant get through the process here because I think they've done a lot. We've tried to try to try to get zoomed meet any, you know, this is the proposal from the applicant. I think it's a good proposal. I have no issues with the preliminary site plan. I think that's a perfect location. For a good development for young people that can move into our community, uh, in a high density area, infill, infill, infill. Uh, I'm ready to move forward, uh, 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 with, with whatever the rest, rest of the board wants to do.
All right. So I, so, so, so I guess my opinion on this is. As we've been going around and everybody has been saying, the lot 10 owner is going to have that responsibility to maintain lot 11. And, and if that's the way we perceive that going forward in perpetuity. Then I'm kind of back to, yeah, make it one lot, then, then force it that way. Rather than force it through a separate agreement that has to be signed and then continually updated as ownership changes. Um, I, I think conservation easements right now, up till now, a lot of, a lot of them have been in. Called HOA developments, right? They've been in bigger developments that have HOAs and we can put the conservation easement maintenance on the HOA. And we've been doing that. There haven't been, but this isn't going to be an HOA. It shouldn't be an HOA. Um, so there, we haven't had that many opportunities to have a conservation easement in a non HOA community. Um, the one we did do, however, was up in Fox Ridge where they've got that huge, big conservation easement. And if you remember, that is part of now one lot. Which, uh, Anthony was going to build on. And so it's, it is part of his lot. That, that huge conservation easement up on the hill. So we've got that one where it is part of one lot. I think we can do this as one lot and that can be kind of. I, I guess kind of a standard, we can always.
But then aren't you going back to the drawing board? I mean, aren't we here for a reason?
My recommendation is that if, if the board agrees that it should be in one lot. That that be done as a condition of approval tonight.
Yes, I would just make that a condition of approval that lots 10 and 11 be combined and move forward. All right, over. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, I, I've got myself back together here electronically and everything. Uh, yes, I agree with you, Gary. Uh, I think that we create one lot. Uh, we subject the what is now lot 11 to a conservation easement. And that would be owned by the lone owner of lot 10, which it's all part of his lot. But be subject to the conservation easement agreement. That has to be, uh, developed between the Chris and the applicant. Uh, which includes a land management plan, which will state. How, when and where the property will be maintained. In the future, either by Mr. Metro's or by his successor, whoever owns lot 10. So, uh, I, I agree that we should, uh. Make it one lot and make it a condition of the preliminary. amended preliminary approval that it be made into one lot and then we can move on. Anybody else, uh? Have any questions, concerns? Uh, could you live with that, Ryan?
Oh, I'm fine. I really am. Is if the applicant is okay. I'm, I'm fine. I think that, yes, I've been in support of this project since the beginning. I think it's a great look. If, if Brennan and the applicant are okay with that, yes, I'll make the motion right now.
So, but hold off because, uh, I mean, our town code is specific on how to get waivers and stuff like that. Planning board may waive reasonable requirements and stuff. If the applicant wishes a waiver. They shall made in writing as part of the application. Shall state fully the grounds of their request. Waiver shall be made by resolution of the planning board showing the date that such waiver was granted. So if you want to go that route.
No, hang on. Everyone except members of the planning board, close your ears. The planning board can waive that stuff too. I'm with you, Chris. I like following the rules, but it's contained in the subdivision chapter. The planning board can waive that too.
Yeah, we're.
Motion to waive all of those rules, uh, that was just discussed.
Brennan, I see you smiling. Don't, don't. What I just said.
All right, folks, let's keep this thing moving. All right. Let's, anything else on the amended preliminary? I want to move forward with that. Uh, we, we have a secret approval that occurred back in October regarding the preliminary approval. That still holds. Uh, I think, uh, Lance had, uh, put a, uh, suggested amended subdivision plan resolution in front of us. Uh, if we want to go to that, let's go to it. And add any further conditions we feel are appropriate.
To be clear, the, the amended revised subdivision, um, that was provided. The difference between what was provided to you guys on Friday to now. Was the removal of the conservation easement language from the preliminary plan. And putting it on to what would be the final subdivision. Um, or a version of it onto the final subdivision resolution. Uh, that was essentially the change from the amended version that you guys saw on Friday to the one that was provided to the town later today.
And I think that's in conformance with code regarding the final plan show include a conservation easement. Draft or language as well as a land management plan. So we can include that in the final. So as far as the preliminary, not to make this thing any more complicated. Uh, what have we added Lance in terms of conditions? We talked about a waiver of.
I'm smiling because I'm trying, but I don't think I got it all. Um, so we have the, the, the standard, the standard conditions that we've had before. Um, but I think it'd be more appropriate if I could just read through them right now for the public and then we'll add in. Um, one, one is the amended preliminary conservation subdivision plan approval. With conditions specified herein is valid for 180 days. Once the conditions of preliminary subdivision approval have been met. Revised drawings included revision dates, the planning board chairperson could then sign the plans. Number two, uh, I added the cover of the subdivision plans should be revised to read amended conservation subdivision plans. As we have already granted preliminary approval, now we're granted an amended preliminary approval. I think the cover should reflect that. Number three, the payment of fee in lieu of set size parkland. Shall be made at the time of issuance of a building permit pursuant to town code chapter 111. And New York State law for lots one through 10. I don't believe based on the comments I've heard today, that wouldn't change the same number of residential lots would still be in play. Uh, number four, a waiver for lot size to be smaller than the required 10,000 square feet. Was requested by the applicant and granted by the planning board. That was from our October meeting. I believe that was what was discussed then. I believe it's still accurate now. Number five, the comments within the town engineer's letter dated October 22nd, 2020. Are to be addressed to the satisfaction of town engineer prior to preliminary plans being signed by the planning board chairperson. Revised plans have obviously been submitted. We have done some level of review. But I held off being that we were going for that the applicant was pursuing an amended preliminary approval. I didn't want to comment on amended preliminary approval, only to have that get denied and then have them have to come back with something else. Uh, the condition number six, comments within the town highway and water superintendent letter. Are to be addressed to the satisfaction of the town highway and water superintendent. Prior to the preliminary plans being signed by the planning board chairperson. I'm not aware of a comment on it specifically. I know that he's had comments. On this application. So I think it'd be important just to keep them included. That way it covers that. Uh, number seven, for again, for your, for your consideration. Um, I know Gary, you had referenced some notes on the plans. I was trying to capture the sheet. I went back and looked. I could not find the sheet that, that, that those plans were located on. Um. Do you recall? Does anybody recall what, what sheet?
Yeah, we looked at them. Now I'm thinking it was sheet three, but I wasn't sure.
Lance, it's the subdivision plan.
The subdivision plan and the conservation analysis notes?
Yes.
Okay.
You could just.
So I have the conservation and now, I'm sorry. I have the conservation now to locate on the plan are to be revised. And then what, what specifically Gary, were we asking to be removed?
Remove reference to.
References to the public trail system.
That's what I thought.
There were two, there were two notes that had.
Yep. Okay. So that's seven. Um. So then number eight, I have a note regarding conservation markers. So if we combine the lots, then, uh, let's go to that statement first. Uh, so it would be the amended preliminary conservation plans are to be revised to combine lots 10 and 11 into a single lot. How do you want to wear the conservation boundary? The conservation boundary is to follow. Lot 11 as previously shown?
Probably only two conservation monuments at the rear property or the easternmost property corners of. Where 10 kind of used, if you're combining the lots where 10 used to stop and 11 started.
Right. You're talking in reference to the conservation markers, the locations of them. Yep. I, I, if I could, I was trying to get through, um, the combination of the two lots first. And then figuring out how we're going to reference the boundary. So then I could better identify the conservation marker boundary. So I have condition eight, the amended preliminary conservation plans that we revise to combine lots 10 and 11 into a single lot. And then the conservation easement boundary is to be shown. Following the boundary of lot, of the previous lot 11?
Yeah, the lot 11.
The eastern boundary between the lots and 10 and 11. Eastern boundary of lot, yeah, but the western boundary of lot 11, the eastern boundary of lot 10. A common, common property line.
I, you know what I could do Lance? I could just give you a meets and bounds description for your review and approval.
Yeah, Brennan, wouldn't you have to do meets and bounds for?
I'm gonna, that's what I'll do is I'll just give you a description for your approval. So.
Right. I, I just think, I, I think what we're saying, because we're combining them and we're still saying there's a portion of lot 10. That has to be conservation and it sounds like the board's agreement with. The area being essentially lot 11 as shown on the plan that he needs to reference that. But I agree with you. You were going to have to provide the meets and bounds anyway.
So yeah, following the southern line of deleted lot 11.
All right, following the southern, the southern boundary. Of the remove lot 11. Okay, I got that. And then the, the last one would be the conservation markers. And Chris, you were saying those locations should be where?
Just between, uh, the conservation easement area on the prop. You know where the line is between 10 and 11, but 10, 11 is not going to exist anymore. Could you also add a section on, uh, long-term stormwater maintenance as far as prior to signatures, they shall file. Our stormwater maintenance agreement with the county.
Yep, stormwater maintenance agreement. Okay.
Uh, um, I'm sorry, but that won't hold up the project, right?
No.
Going forward?
No.
Unless you want to put it prior to issuance of the first building permit on a whole, however you want to do it.
Nope, nope, nope.
Well, here, let's do this. Let's do this. The stormwater means agreement, if the board's going to move forward with final, let's put that condition on final. Remove it from preliminary approval so that the preliminary approval just has the nine conditions as read. Is the board okay with that?
Yeah, and that could also occur upon dedication to streets too. Because the street's going to.
Correct. It, it, it'll be, it'll be an MRB's comment that has to be provided. It's got to be part of our approval of the SWIP. Um, and then ultimately, uh, we'll get that agreement to be forwarded over. I think we can make that a condition of final.
Okay. All right.
Then I guess, do we need one more? Uh, condition that says the planning board. Waives the requirement for a conservation subdivision to be a separate lot from a building lot.
Yes.
It's not the conservation subdivision. It's the conservation easement.
Okay, well, I had words, I know. That's all right.
Yep. So we have 10 conditions with that for amended preliminary subdivision subdivision approval.
I'm sorry Lance, did you, did you include the granting the waiver for the reduced lot dimensions?
Yeah, that would be condition number four, as shown on the.
I'm just going through my notes. Make sure we got everything. Uh, Monja's talked about.
I think we got it all.
Okay. Uh, I, you know, I forgot to, uh, open the discussion up to anyone in the audience who would like to speak. Uh, before we take any action on this, I would like to hear from anyone who is. Out there that would like to, uh, address the board regarding this application. Is there anyone?
We have given everyone the ability to unmute themselves. So if you do want to speak, please unmute yourself.
Okay. I, you know, there was somebody at the town board meeting that had questioned when this was going to come up, but I guess, uh. They're not joining us tonight. Okay. Well, let's, uh, move on. Okay. So, uh, can I get a, um?
All right. Yep. With that, I will make a motion to approve an amended preliminary conservation subdivision plan. CPN 20 dash 066. Uh, with the 10 conditions as previously discussed.
Do I have a second? Okay, got a motion Gary. I think it was Bob that seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, uh, let's move on to the final quickly. Uh. I think the only thing we have to discuss in. Uh, any terms, uh, it would be the, uh, conservation easement language and the, uh, land management plan. As outlined in our code. And I think it was discussed, uh, that Chris Nadler would, uh, prepare that in cooperation with Brennan. And come, come up with a description of what's allowed, what's not allowed. How it's to be maintained, who will maintain it, how often they will maintain it. And I guess giving any penalties for failure to maintain. So, uh, is anything else that would be in that document, Chris?
Nope.
Okay.
And it'll be based on the easement as revised by, the easement submitted. By Brennan as revised by Chris Jensen. If unless I'm instructed otherwise.
Which is the old lot 11.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I see Ryan has his hand up. Mr. State Chuck.
The only question I had, uh, Mr. Nadler was in the first paragraph, it said that the conservation easement will be issued to the town. I made a reference to that. I'm paraphrasing, but. Can you explain, uh, what that meant? Like, I don't think the town's going to hold the easement, are they?
Yes, the town will hold the conservation easement and the town will have. The ability to enforce the conservation easement. That is, um, how we just had consensus years ago. On how to proceed on these things. Um, as you referenced earlier, the towns had problems enforcing these. Because they were granted to HOAs or to neighbors. Or just our general generic deed restriction. Which requires a lawsuit from neighbors in Supreme Court. Which probably costs 25, 30 grand. The town can enforce these significantly, uh, more cost effectively. Um, and so that's been the consensus and how we've, the town accepts conservation easements. Um, the only other real, really. Viable option in Ontario County is the Finger Lakes Land Trust can also accept conservation easements. Um, to my knowledge at least, um, but they usually require like a quarter million dollar endowment. Uh, to pay for the inspection, investigation and, um, enforcement. So the town can do that significantly more cost effective. Bob?
Question, I think it was number four on the management page stated that the owner. Would be able to say who could hike on the property. I thought that was kind of either vague because there's a lot more activities other than hiking. And if the town is managing it, why would the owner make that call?
Uh, so let me be clear, let me be clear. The town will not manage this property. Um, the owner, the owner, the lot number 10 owner. Will be responsible for all management and all liability. So if.
I ask again, why is it just hiking? Because the management talks about multiple activities on that property.
Okay, uh, no reason to my knowledge. I can add whatever, whatever.
It'll be their property. So they can tell who, who and who can't go on their own property. We'll have a conservation, but it'll be their property.
I understand that, but the letter said for hiking. The town, that, that person will decide who can hike on that property.
I, I think, I, I, I think it's just because it was paragraph.
I, I think, I, I think it's just because that was paragraph four was talking about trails for hiking, so that, and that's where that was put there.
Yeah, it was basically, there's no, there's not going to be any asphalt or paved trails or, you know. And then it, it basically is just reassuring that it's not public access easement, right? It's saying that they have the right to say who can enter and exit their land, so.
Bob, are there activities that you would like to see included on there that aren't?
When I read it, Chris, it said that, you know, you could put TPs of X, Y, and Z, but, and then, then the owner would only decide who could hike there, but not camp or whatever else. That was kind of vague.
So Chris Jensen's revisions eliminated the TPs and the long houses and anything like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if everybody in the board saw Chris's.
Chris, can you, you doing, take, take the board through that, your revisions really quickly?
One second, I'll try to open it.
And John Robitella, you did hear me close the public hearing before the vote, right?
There was, the, I can read the paragraph here. Basically, there, there was reference to small sheds, portable outhouses, temporary buildings, such as, there you go. And then, okay, I haven't seen this one yet, so.
So pretty much, I removed all the buildings, small sheds, outhouses and everything like that.
And agricultural uses.
And no motor, that sort of stuff. And if they want to add a parking area, it's upon planning board approval.
Chris, can you go back up? I guess you took out, right, just, just above prohibited activities, mowing of the grass shall be allowed. I, I think, as I said, I'm concerned about that little strip along the road.
Gary, that, that dawned on me as just now as well.
Yeah, that's all motorized equipment, that's all motorized equipment.
That's the first time I've seen that document, so I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll modify that to say except along the strip adjacent to the road or something like that, so that that can be mode, I'm assuming?
Yes.
The stormwater management area where the water has to flow and they have to maintain that to get to the catch bases and stuff.
I guess I would propose removing the motorized restriction. What if somebody wants to take a string trimmer back in there to, to manage the property?
It says motorized vehicles as far as like snowmobiles, ATVs and stuff, it doesn't include, it says motorized vehicles.
Why would we restrict that? Why would we restrict?
Forestry may require a off-road vehicle.
I mean, the idea of a conservation easement for the conservation subdivision is to remove the development rights, just like we do with PDRs. I mean, if we're going to be over restrictive, I think that that's too burdensome for the, any applicant.
And why are we removing the agricultural use?
Yeah, we, we should be encouraging.
Encouraging farmland.
And that happens all throughout the country, agricultural use is very common in conservation easements.
Community garden out there.
Right.
Agricultural.
That's up to a field.
Yeah, but then it's a big, do they clear cut it so they can do agricultural? That's the question.
In a hundred years, we just don't, I thought the purpose of conservation easements was to remove and strip the development rights.
Right.
If the property does that, that should be, isn't that enough?
Ryan, I don't know that I agree with your interpretation of a conservation easement in terms of our town code, or at least the application of conservation easements in the town of Kenan Dagwa.
We don't allow motorized access on conservation easements?
Not.
So.
That I've seen recently.
Out of the thirty-five hundred acres of PDR development and agricultural lands, we don't allow snowmobilers to ride on snowmobiles and those.
No, not on PDR, PDRs are treated differently than conservation easements.
Right, right, okay, I guess, I mean, I, it just, it seems like it's over restrictive. From what, from my, from my experience with conservation easements dating back to the early two thousands, if not late nineteen nineties, conservation easements are an agreement between willing buyer, willing seller, that, that can make rules on the land as law, the minimum is stripping the development rights from them. But then we always encourage other activities that are stewarding the, the resources, could be agricultural, farm production, things that just we can do in perpetuity, because this easement goes on into perpetuity, hundreds, hundreds of years into the future. So if we start being over restrictive on them, it just would cause more of a nightmare maybe in the future, so I don't know. I don't, I guess I want to be less restrictive while recognizing the value of taking the development rights off of the property, but that's only my opinion.
Let me tell you what our town code requires, a perpetual conservation easement, restricting development and allowing use only for agriculture, forestry, passive recreation, protection of natural resources or similar conservation purposes with the approval of the town or qualified not-for-profit conservation organization.
I, I agree with all that. I think that that could be the simplest language for this conservation easement.
Yeah, just take that language and put it right in there.
Copy and paste it.
Well, so passive recreation doesn't allow for ATV or a snowmobile.
Well, you may need an ATV to do forestry, so, I mean, especially if you're eighty-two, right?
Do we have a definition of passive recreation in our town code? I don't think we do. We don't have a, we don't, I don't think we have a definition for conservation. I don't think we do.
There's a conservation easement definition, I was just going to post into the chat here, but just saying that aloud, apologies.
Yeah. Amanda, is that in our town code?
Yes, I, let me see here.
We, we had that previously on the subdivision plat when we came last time, was, it was the language right out of the conservation subdivision. We've since moved that off into the, the second sheet here, so we can reference it into an easement document.
Oh, the conservation easement definition is what I just read you guys. I don't know off the top of my head if we define passive recreation, my guess is we don't.
Well, the other thing, folks, the, the reason this went to a conservation subdivision, one of the reasons was we're dealing with a a forest area in the back, one lot eleven. And I think the intent of the conservation subdivision was to protect that forested area, was a concern of the ECB. And I think we just don't want to get into any situation, situations where we would allow for any type of use that would compromise those trees. And I think we're just trying to protect them and have a passive use of that property. And that, that's the intent, and that's why it was granted conservation subdivision approval.
I think we've done it, I mean.
Let me interrupt you for a minute, Brennan, Tabitha, do you, first of all, apologies, this is, the board doesn't, you know, we don't do a ton of conservation subdivisions for the very reason, reasons you're seeing now, it's a lot more complicated than it appears at, at the outset, but do you have a problem with restricting agriculture in terms of remaining or leaving the forest?
I think, I think I've said it to Brennan before, the, the conservation easements we've been familiar with are certainly not clear cutting anything, but maintaining the land is certainly, should be part of it. You know, and that is forest, forestry, so if in fact you need some sort of vehicle to get back there to maintain it, I, I, I'm, I think everyone is just like expounding on this language and we could, it's not, it's not. I like, like Brennan said, my dad's eighty-two, I don't know, like, he, he keeps things pretty pristine in his life. And it's written in the code just to, to go back to be able to maintain your property. I don't know, I mean, I, I just, it, it seems pretty simple to me. I, I don't think it should be eliminated.
Does anybody on the board have a problem with Mr. Metros using an ATV for forestry management purposes?
No, not at all. Oh.
I'm going to prepare one that eliminates agriculture if it's required, if it requires clear cutting.
Don't eliminate agriculture.
He, he said it right, Ryan, he said it right. He says, as long as it does not require clear cutting.
Okay, if the applicant's okay with that, that's fine. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Tabitha, are you, if you're not okay with that, speak now, because we can work something else out, I think.
Okay, repeat exactly what you want it to say.
I'm going to eliminate agriculture if clear cutting is required.
I, I think it's the other way, Chris, I think it's you're allowing agriculture, but no clear cutting.
Exactly, that's why I'm, yeah, no, yeah, no clear cutting.
I got this, I'll, I'll submit it, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Did you guys get approval done yet?
No, not on final. Where, we got into this, the weeds on this stuff. And this is why it would have been nice to have drafts passed around a week, two weeks ahead of time to everyone to review and look at, and we could come to this meeting and not, you know, not that we wasted time, but there was a lot of time spent on this. And I realized it's somewhat unique in that we have a private property owner owning the conservation easement. In most cases that we said before, we, it's the H O A, it used to be the town, but in this case, it's a, it's a private homeowner, and we just want to make sure that we're clear as to what that homeowner can and can't do on that conservation easement. So, with that being said, anybody else want to, any input to the final subdivision considerations? Lance, do you want to go over the conditions that are currently in front of us?
Sure. So, final conservation subdivision plan approval, plan approval, excuse me. Condition number one, the final conservation subdivision plan approval with conditions is valid for a period of one hundred and eighty days from today, once conditions of the final subdivision approval have been met and shown on, revise drawings including the revision dates, the planning board chairperson can then sign the plans. Two, the amended preliminary conservation subdivision plans are to be signed once all conditions of approval have been met prior to signatures being affixed to the final plans. Because this is a phased project, we're required to sign preliminary and then sign final.
One and two.
Three, the title of the conserve, of the cover of the subdivision plans is revised to read final conservation subdivision plan. Four, and then four, five, six are all the same from the preliminary, amended preliminary approval. Four is payment and fee, a little parkland, five is the county engineer's comments, and six is the town highway comments. Seven is written as the conservation, a conservation easement and management plan for the overall project is to be prepared by the town attorney and executed and filed by the property owner prior to obtaining the planning board chairperson's signature on the final conservation subdivision plans. Those are the seven conditions for your consideration.
Someone be willing to make a motion to adopt the resolution including those conditions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution including those conditions as read.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. A motion of second for the final subdivision approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bren took a lot to get here, but we got there. We appreciate your patience and it, yeah, it was, it was a somewhat unique subdivision, no doubt about it. Thank you, Tabitha, for attending then your input.
Thanks, we have to get creative, right, with this info stuff, so thank you guys.
Brendan, you going to hang around for?
Absolutely.
Eifert?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, we will move on then. To applicants who have been waiting patiently, and the first one being CPN twenty-one oh six, triple oh, double oh six, Scott Carter, representing Tim and Lisa Ash, owners of property at forty-six twenty-nine County Route sixteen, who are seeking a single-stage site plan approval for an addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Scott? Good evening. Unmuted, Scott?
Hello?
Hey, there he is.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, I know you could fall asleep with conservation subdivision discussion.
This is not a conservation subdivision.
Thank goodness.
This is, this is just the site plan, sorry. As your announcement stated, this is also not a tear down rebuild, it is an addition to an existing structure, kind of a unique structure, it's actually a church there, which I was unaware of until I was contacted by the new owners, the new owner, Tim and Lisa Ash, I believe Tim is on the Zoom meeting with us. The proposal is to build on to that existing structure with about, I believe it's about a three thousand square foot addition. And improve the site by way of landscaping and also a much improved wastewater system. We're, we're on public water, we've created a driveway entrance that is safer and more accessible. And what's there now, we think we've created a, a really good project. Tim has been doing a lot of the individual landscaping work around the house prior to this project taking hold. And I think he's a good spokesperson for landscaping, if anyone would like to speak about that, we did however retain a landscape architect to do a design for us, and that landscape architect created the plan that you see before you. That's pretty much it. The only other thing I would add is that the, the site is very challenging from a topography standpoint. We are fitting this house in by locking into the existing structure, and as we project the structure to the south southeast, we get into grading issues, so that area of the house is to receive a retaining wall treatment, as you see, they're on our plans. But we think it's a good project and we hope you do too.
Okay, thank you. Does Tim want to say anything regarding the application, what he intends to do out there? Let him speak now, if he would like to add something?
Thanks Chuck, I think Scott articulated it well. We're excited to, to retain and, and enjoy the existing chapel, it was built in nineteen fifteen, we, we love the the history of that and, and look forward to really fitting into that architecture with this addition. As well as the, the park-like, what we consider to be a park-like lot, so there's lots of, you know, old large trees that we're retaining and, and really trying to build a pathway through the lot that A, is safe, but B, kind of takes advantage of of the trees and, and of the park setting. It'll, it'll be our primary residence, so we're excited to get the project formally underway.
Does someone want to address the shoreline guidelines?
We had the landscape architect add a narrative to the landscaping plan, if you can pan to it, it's in the lower right-hand corner of the landscaping plan, because I felt he was the person who was best suited to comment on what he had come up with.
Yeah, the, the main home is pretty far up the hill. It's, looking at the photos you sent, which were very helpful. It looks like there's sort of a tunnel that you can see from the house down to the lake and the, the lake up to the house. And a lot of, I guess, undersized scrub trees were cut off there, you can see them. Was that done for purposes of having a view of the lake? Uh, was that done for purposes of having a view of the lake?
It was. We, we, again, trying to maintain the healthy native trees and taking away things that were either just overgrown, um, or not native to, to the area, but in essence, just to create a notch to be able to see the water.
I bring that up because the, uh, the ECB, that was one of their concerns, was the number of trees that had to be removed for the addition, and I guess wanting to be assured that additional trees that did not, uh, were not instrumental to the construction of the addition, not be removed if possible. And certainly what you plan on supplementing it with, as shown on, uh, Carter Van Dyke's landscape plan is certainly, uh, certainly attractive. Uh, board members have any concerns on the, uh, shoreline guidelines or anything else on this application? No, this is, this is Gary, and I think per the plan, at least the way I interpreted this, that there would not be any additional cutting of any trees, um, to the east of where that little, there's a, there's a little squiggly line there that says general clear cutting limits, retain existing trees. So that view that you had up there, the, the view from the house down to the lake, that one, that right, that one right there, uh, my assumption is that is gonna be maintained, just like that. Um, there's no additional trees on that view are gonna necessarily come down.
That, that's partially true. There's a, there's an ash tree that's dead that needs to come down to the right of those Adirondack trees, not the first tree, but the second tree to the right of those chairs. That one's gotta come down. And then, uh, the, the, the tree just to the left, not really sure what species it is, but that also is structurally not sound um, at the base or anywhere up the trunk. So those are the two that, that, as you look here, need to come down.
Okay. Well, I mean, if, if it's just we call forestry management, dead trees and things like that, I mean, that, I think they have to be maintained, taken down if they have to. Um, in terms of the view from the lake, um, I think the landscaping plan that they have in front of the house and, and then with the existing trees that are gonna be remaining there, I think is adequate to support the shoreline guideline, guidelines. That's my, uh, my opinion. Over. Yeah, I think the facade of the, uh, addition is, uh, also very pat, uh, soft. It's, I think, uh, neutral colors or, uh, earthy, earthy tones. So that, you know, certainly it's not gonna stick out from the lake.
I agree. This is Amanda. Um, I have no further, um, comments or questions, just to note that, um, I think this aligns with the shoreline guidelines and, um, it's a good use of space and probably an otherwise challenging lot to build on.
Tim, after I said that, now I'm looking at this elevation, and do you intend to, uh, have the facade as, as white such as that, or is it, uh?
No, that, that's stucco as you see it right now, Chuck. The
Yeah.
final siding choice is gonna be a little softer than that. So it's not gonna be stark white.
Okay, good. John, just make sure the record reflects that. Uh, yeah, you're even so creative as, uh, you have an existing tree in the deck. Uh, is that in pretty good shape, that tree? And I see it's gonna remain.
It is. Yeah. There'll be the second existing tree through the deck. That will end up being two, ones a cedar, which is pretty cool.
Well, we appreciate you making the effort to, uh, save those trees. I guess the other thing, as you said, the slopes, uh, we're on a pretty steep hill going down. That was another concern ECB had. And, uh, uh, I guess, uh, if you look at the site plan, Scott, you, I think, put a lot of check structures in, if I remember, and then you've got the, uh, get, get that wall.
Well, we have, we have the wa- we have the wall. We have a silt fence for erosion control protection, and we're also proposing to, um, put in a rain garden.
That's what I was looking for.
Speak positive. That's on the landscaping plan, just the outline. We're happy to show more details on the, on the rain garden, um, on the, on the final drawings that we submit to you. Uh, we hadn't detailed the rain garden at this point, but that seems to be the optimal location for it.
Okay. Yeah, I see you're, you're, uh, you're gonna go with a permeable or porous pavement out on, uh, out on the frontage, but the road?
That was proposed by the, uh, the landscape architect, yes.
And that's your intent?
I believe it is.
Okay. All right, we, we, uh, I think the town certainly endorses, uh, permeable pavements. Uh, the only thing in recent discussions, uh, came up as to what the, uh, design and structure and makeup and the maintenance responsibility of that porous pavement, because it does have to be maintained. And I would ask Scott that, uh, you put on your detail sheet a detailed cross-section of what that porous pavement will look like. Uh, so we, uh?
It's on the landscaping plan. I think the landscape architect put it on there somewhere. Um, I think he zeroed in on that. Um, there you go.
Oh, okay. Was that based on any geotech investigation as to permeability and all that, or it's just a standard that he uses? Looks like?
I was just teaching students about this today.
All right.
Yeah, it's not, it, you know, notice how it's got washed, number fifty-seven compacted in two-inch lifts. That is, as long as that's good wash, this is a whole entire system here. Um, and so this, this looks this good spec to me as I, as I recognize that. And so I, this does meet permeable pavement specs, uh, professional standard that I can, that I can identify and, and speak to.
Okay. Thank you for providing that. Uh, roof drains, they go into the, uh, the rain garden, Scott?
Yes, they'll, they'll be directed to that, yes.
Okay. Uh, roadway drainage off of West Lake, uh, does it come off West Lake and go around the, uh, around the structure, or is it, uh?
No, if you, if you, um, pull up our site grading plan, which I think might teach you to, and zero in on that a little bit, you'll see that there is, there's actually a, there's actually a gutter that goes through there. And we're creating a slight high spot on our side, on the east side of the gutter, but along West Lake Road there, um, it actually drains to the south, south along the street, and doesn't really come onto us. It's, it's contained in a gutter. If you, if you went a little closer, you can see the gutter.
Yep. Okay, just, just don't want, uh, street water coming.
Right. No, no, that was our
Front door.
Those are concerned too. I, I should mention, uh, you haven't asked the question, but I think I should, I should mention it, but have been in touch with the watershed inspector, uh, Tyler, and I have been in touch with the New York State Health Department regarding the wastewater system design that we've shown. We, we are, we're specking the system shown because of the available area and not wanting to remove more vegetation, and we're currently, uh, finalizing that. The, um, the sloping area, downslope of the system, uh, the state health department would like us to put in a, um, terrace system, uh, step it down versus one, um, uniform, um, sheet of of that extension from the system. So that's where we are, and that we do not have final approval from the state health department at this point.
As we've done in the past, that can be a condition.
Okay.
Of any approval. Uh, anyone else on the board before I go to the audience?
Uh, Chuck, I just like to make sure that the owner and, and Scott, you may remember this too, when it comes to the rain gardens, one of the complaints we've heard from, uh, people implementing it on the, on the ground is that, uh, i- if we don't get a, a lot of rain in a, in a particular year, some of the vegetation will die in the rain garden, and so they end up just kind of mowing over it, and then it doesn't function as it will in normal years. So that there may be some maintenance required on that rain garden to water it, to keep the stuff alive and have it functioning normally. Are you guys aware of that? You're willing to accept that responsibility, right, Scott?
Well, Tim is the, um, is the green thumb of the project, so I I think he'll, he'll be the one who inherits that responsibility. Um, I, I guess I was of the understanding that the board likes us to put in rain gardens and, um, it is a form of stormwater mitigation, and that's why we showed it to the level that we have. Um, I'm sensing that Tim is pretty proficient at, at taking care of the property and doing exactly what you say, but I think I'd rather have him speak to the issue.
Yeah, my, uh, my daughter works for the U.S. Forestry Service. Uh, she's a soil chemist. She's looking at me right now. Just whatever they say, refine doing it.
Yeah, that's great. And the reason I bring it up is just, some people, they want to put in this rain garden and think it's gonna be just this beautiful rain garden forever and ever, but it does take a little bit of maintenance and it is gonna be a real benefit to have it on the property. But just want to make, you know what I mean? That's great, and you should give your sister a big, or your daughter a big round of applause because she's doing good work.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're now aware that, that that's an issue, but, uh, have no problem maintaining it.
Uh, this is, this is Gary. I, I had just a couple of questions. I did not see any detail regarding the, uh, retaining wall that's gonna be going around the property and what and so, I guess, do we need a, do we need a detail on there that's gonna, that shows what that retaining wall is, what the materials are gonna be, and, uh, like, is it wood? Is it concrete? Is it block? What is it? So I think we gotta add, add one.
Well, that, that's a, that's a good comment, and, and we, uh, I think it was just last week, uh, um, got a structural engineer on board to do the design of the wall structurally. We've actually had a geotech out there who has done, um, drilling. And, um, the foundation is tricky for the house at the southeast corner and also the wall at the southeast corner. So yes, we will have a structural engineer, um, stamping and certifying the design presented. And, um, and we will have a detail of the wall to be constructed.
Nice. Good, thank you. And, and, and I guess the, the last question, I'm just trying to visualize in my mind, um, that section in the, the south that you say is, is a, as a ramp. That ramp, is it, is that just a, a grading of the, I think you said, I think it was about twelve feet there, grading of the lawn? So it's just a smooth ramp? Is that a, uh, is there a structure on the south there that protects it? I, I'm trying to visualize what that, what that ramp is.
Um, I don't, I don't think we show, um, a ramp on our grading plan right there. I mean, those, those are really contours that are shown.
Now, go, go to sheet two. Well, it's been, it's, that's different than the one I'm looking at.
We, we did, we did call out a ramp in our preliminary plans once upon a time. Um, but we hadn't really, um, gelled on a design for that. One of the things that we wanted to do was make that area open and accessible for uh, vehicles, you know, upon completion of the project, should any service work and need to happen. And that would be the best way to get down and around. Um, but we did, we did not detail it. We, we thought about it initially under the preliminary plans, and then when we modified our plans after the PRC, I believe it was, I believe we deleted it.
Well, that's interesting because, so now I'm gonna say, we've never seen your final plans. The plans that are on the thing are, are showing the ramp. It's, I guess it's the preliminary. We've never seen these final. So now I'm, uh, really kinda interested here, I
Yeah, I, I, I also recall the plan of the ramp, Gary.
Yeah. So what else has been changed? From preliminary to final? Because we, board has never seen these drawings. I, I, I think for the record, I want to say that we've never seen these drawings.
We, we went, we, we submitted our plans. We went through the PRC meeting. I believe we had some comments from PRC. We reissued the plans after PRC, and those are the plans that you have before you.
They're not, they were never posted on the site.
Um.
I, the, the sit, plans on the site were dated one twenty-two. So you would have, so that was, uh, that's the ones we're looking at.
Um.
Well, actually, the date of the drawings is August twenty-twenty.
That, that's when we originated the
Yeah, that, that's the date of the drawings are August twenty-twenty, so I don't sure what the date you have on your drawings. Lance, can you? Have you seen the?
No. So the, these plans weren't referred to us for review, but I agree, the, the resolution that I had drafted up was based on the plans that I believe the board has, which are the ones dated August twenty-twenty. So I have some conditions on there that I was just highlighting because as we were scrolling through the version that was being shown, I realized some of those conditions had been met, but I, I, I agree, I haven't seen the plans that are before you right now. So I guess
These ones were from two nineteen. I guess they weren't uploaded. Uh, I'll check with Michelle tomorrow.
All right. Well, with, with that, okay, the ramp's gone, so that solves that problem. The, the only other comment I had it, and, and maybe there, it's been resolved on this, uh, stat here as well. Um, I don't know, but you had the site data, general notes, and the signature approval blocks were on two, were on two separate sheets.
Yeah.
And those should, I, I would think you'd only want them on one sheet and not two.
Okay.
So that the, uh, so everybody doesn't have to remember to sign two different sheets. Is that, isn't that correct? Lance or, and Chuck, I don't know.
So the si- the signature sheets, we, we typically, there has been no standard for the town of Canandaigua that's been adopted in terms of what sheets get signed. But what we typically require is, i- if possible, the site plan, the utility plans, the grading plan, erosion control plan. Those are the main plans, what we consider to be the significant plans. Those require signatures to be shown on them. So as long as the signature blocks are on those sheets, then I would think they would be okay. Um, but the site data, if you reference the data itself, that should be all on one sheet.
Well, you'll, you only want the site data on sheet one, then?
Yeah, if we could have that on one sheet, that'd be better. That'd be easy.
That, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. That, that's, uh, let me look here. Yeah, that was, that was the only thing I had. Okay. I, I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll jump back in since somebody talked, and this is kind of gets maybe toward the, toward the resolution when we put this together, but since we have only looked at this, um, should, should we, should, in the resolution, should we include, um, Lance, originally, your, your comments in total? So that we don't have to, uh, trust that that we didn't miss one or things like that? So that we, we ought to reference the, the twenty-twenty plan in terms of, uh?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. We, my thought is, is just keep the, I mean, assuming the boards read the conditions and they're okay with it originally, I would say that if you are, then just keep those conditions on there, and then if they've been addressed, we can review them and confirm that they've been addressed.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Okay. Okay. Is that, uh, to the liking of the entire board? Okay. Uh, is anyone in the audience who would like to, uh, speak regarding this application? Please identify yourself. Okay, hearing none, uh, we can proceed on. I think this is a, uh, it's a type-two seeker. Uh, and, uh, let's do the seeker. I'll make a motion. We, uh, we adopt the, uh, we accepted the plan as a seeker type-two, and no further action is required on, by this board regarding the application.
by this board regarding the application as it applies to seeker. Or do I have a second?
Yes, Bob, I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the site plan resolution.
Mr. Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, can we, I'm, if we're going to approve the revised plans, I do need the revision date. I only have a date of August 20. I don't know what the revision date was.
Chris.
Chris, do you know that the revision date?
Sorry, I have to unmute myself. It is the February 19th.
Thank you.
Okay, last revised, February 19th.
Correct. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. It's going to go to you anyway. So the resolutions, would you please list them for us, Lance? The conditions.
Yes, sir. So the conditions as drafted up for your consideration, one, site plan approval with conditions specified herein is valid for a period of about 180 days from today. All conditions are to be addressed. Once they've been addressed, revised drawings, revision dates, the planning board, chairperson will then sign the site plan. Number two, a site development building permit application is to be completed and provided to the town of Canandaigua Development Office prior to the planning board chairperson's signature being affixed to the final site plans. Number three, a soil stabilization and erosion control surety estimate is to be prepared by the applicant and provided to the town development office for review and processing in accordance with local law 19 of 2017 amendment, chapter 174, section 174 dash 32. Number four, prior to issuance of a CVO and approval from the Canandaigua Lake watershed inspector regarding their review of the onsite wastewater treatment system design is to be provided to the town of Canandaigua Development Office. Number five, prior to signatures being affixed to the plans, all counts from the town of Canandaigua water superintendent are to be addressed. Number six, the landscaping plan is to be revised to depict the limits of the tree line to remain as shown on the other plans. I believe that's one of the conditions that looked as if they have been addressed, but as we discussed, we'll keep that on. Number seven, details of the proposed retaining wall are to be provided for review prior to signature being affixed on plans. Number eight, the material of the proposed nature trail is to be, is to be shown on the landscaping plan prior to signatures. Number nine, the planning board thoroughly discussed the shoreline development guidelines with the applicant and determined that no additional improvements were warranted at this time. If the applicant intends to do any additional clearing of, of the site outside of what has been approved by the planning board and reflected on the site plans, it is understood that these would require separate review and approval by the town of Canandaigua. And then number 10, the site plans are to be revised to comply with the town of Canandaigua Site Design and Development Criteria Manual, Article VD3 regarding drainage improvements and mitigation. As the proposed total project disturbance is 20,000 square feet or more, the project is required to provide water quality proof preservation measures designed to manage the impacts of a two-year storm array. Again, I believe that's another one that's been revised and addressed on the plans over before you tonight.
Okay.
Those are things for your consideration.
Those are the conditions. I need a motion on the resolution to approve the plan.
Uh, this is Gary. I'll make a motion to approve a single-stage site plan. We're a professional engineering group representing Tim and Lisa Ash, 4629 County Road 16, CPN 21 dash 006.
Second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, man. Okay, got a motion a second with 10 conditions. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
And, and daughter.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Sorry to keep you, sorry to keep you waiting and sorry for the, having to go two more weeks.
No problem at all. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay. Another person that we held over two weeks is Mr. Grove, representing Randy Navis, owner of property on the Bassinere Road. I mean, seeking a single-stage site plan approval for the construction of a new single-family dwelling. Bill Grove, good evening.
Hi, guys. How are you? So I think this one's pretty straightforward. It's a new four-bedroom house on vacant land. The land is a little bit unique in the shape of it, the shape of the lot. It's actually about 21 and a half acres in total. There's this wider part at the road frontage, but then it narrows down to a, a small right-of-way that, that accesses the, the rear of the property on the south. Which is where most of the acreage is, but the intention is to build the new house in the front portion of, portion of the property. It's downhill from Rose Zero Road to the house site, and then it slopes away from the house site down towards the septic system. So I believe it's pretty straightforward. It's the first time I've ever submitted a project and didn't have a single PRC comment. So I, I thought that was pretty cool. Entertain any, any questions anybody has.
Retrain you well, Bill.
All right.
Uh, no, it is pretty straightforward. Uh, do you want to create a conservation easement on that back property?
Um, I don't think so, no. Sounds like a good time, but no, not right now.
We're looking for land. Yeah, I really couldn't find too much myself on this, other than the lot shape is, you, you, have you talked to Tyler at all about?
Yeah, yep, we did. Yep, it's actually, because it's a raised fill system, it has to go to the state health department. They reviewed it once and asked for a couple of minor revisions, which we sent back and we're waiting on, on the approval of it. But I don't anticipate any, any further changes on it.
Okay. We have a ag data statement from the applicant. Was not required to go to the Ontario County Planning Board, so that avoids that issue. Uh, board, any questions?
I have no issues at all. This is pretty straightforward. I was out there the other day. Pretty wide open property out there in the cornfield. No problems.
Okay. Gary, Ryan, Amanda, we all good?
Yeah, I didn't have any problems either.
No comments.
Yeah, Bill, we even got you trained on putting the asphalt from the edge of road to the right-of-way line. Thank you very much.
Why the rain garden, Bill?
Uh, because we're over 20,000 square feet of disturbance in the watershed. I believe that was a requirement. I'd rather not, but I think it's required, so.
So just my comments, just that, you know, maybe they reflect them, John, Mr. Robitella, that, you know, that it's going to take some maintenance. You know what I mean? And, and you might need, are the gutters going to go right to the rain garden?
They will. Yep.
You know, so it should help, but just, you know, let the owners know that it may require a little bit of patience, you know, for that structure. Sometimes we get dry years and it may need a little bit of help to keep if, if they, those specific plants that are water dependent, you know, to keep survival. Might need watering once in a while.
You call them rain gardens for a reason, right, Ryan? They need rain. Okay. I think we're ready to move on. It's a type two seeker. In fact, on this one, I'll, I'll accept the bundled approval for the seeker as well as the site plan.
How many conditions are there?
Lance, I think there were like four or five.
I have, as submitted to you guys, there was six total.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Ready?
Uh, I'm just, yeah, make the motion, then I'll, I'll comment. Go ahead, Bob. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the bundle seeker and site plan approval on CPN 21 dash 009 Grove Engineering, representing Randy Navis at property at Rosa Road for a single plan, for a single family dwelling.
With those, seven was it, conditions?
Six.
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 I'll second that.
Second my Ryan. Uh, Lance, number five has to do with Jim, Jim's concerns, and I don't think Jim even responded on this. It's on well.
I'm fine with, yeah, I'm fine with removing it. It's not an issue. I just sometimes, sometimes I don't know if he had an opportunity or not. And being that he's the water superintendent for the town and highway, I just sometimes thought it'd be good to have his approval on it regardless. Your call.
Uh, yeah, it's on well, so it wouldn't be a water issue. It might be a road issue, so why don't you leave it on? Okay, so we have the six conditions. Anyone else have any comments? If not, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? John, did we get a motion a second or we just go right to vote? I'm sorry.
You had a block.
Block, okay.
I moved and Ryan seconded.
Okay.
Both together.
Very good. We are done. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. See you next time.
Have a good night. All right, the next application our agenda is from Mark's Engineering, representing John Lewis, owner of property at 4210 County Route 16, who is seeking a single-stage site plan approval to tear down and rebuild an existing single-family dwelling. Uh, it did require action by the ZBA, which did not occur last week. It was continued. So I guess as far as our activities this evening, there will be none. So this will be postponed till our April 27th meeting. And which would be after the, the April 20th ZBA meeting.
We're open for recommendations too, if you, if you wanted, if you saw something.
You know, I didn't. Trying to get some free advice, huh?
I'll pay for it if I have to.
You're paying with your time.
It does, it doesn't, if the board.
Yeah, I really didn't get into it too much, Brennan, so.
That's fine. We'll touch base next month.
It always could change. It could go away, hopefully not go away, but at least change.
Right.
You, you could tell us what the concern was or how it's, if you want to spend a little or two on it.
Yeah, no, that'd be fine. The, the separation of the driveway from the south line, we're pushing, we're tight. Uh, it's Dr. Saylor's property on the south there, and he, he just likes to see it further away, so. And that's the gist of it. We think we have a plan that we could remove the driveway variance so that it's 10 foot off the line. And I don't know as well be able to remove the lock coverage variance. So.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to, let's see, who is still here? And Brennan's going to stick around for Eifer. Anybody else? Out there that, other than just interested residents? All right, well, to get you out of the way, Brennan, let's go down to discussion on the Carol Eifer property. Who is the owner of property at 3535 State Route 364? You're seeking to amend our zoning code to allow for MUO mixed-use overlay district to construct some residential property structures. Not going to spend a whole lot of time on that. It was given to the planning board to, to come up with a, I guess, a recommendation to the town board. Uh, we have 60 days to provide an advisory report, so that would give us this meeting and the next to go over it. I don't, if you want to, if you want to just give us a briefing as to what you plan on doing, that'd be very helpful because I think what was submitted was somewhat dated, and I wasn't sure exactly, you can tell us what you intend to do out there. And then I guess it's up to the, the board to make a recommendation as to whether the MUO would apply or not.
Yeah, so, um, I think he's putting up something. There you go. Yeah, so these, these are very granulated, but anyways, the, the gist of it is 120 townhomes of units. And then two single-family residential units at the top of the hill. This is all on the east side of Eastlake Road. If you're familiar with Otisiana Cove, it's about, I would say, 800 feet up, 800 feet north on the the east side of the road there, it's, there's a big hunt real estate signs out in front now, or there were up there at least.
It's right on the town line, right?
Yes.
Yep.
It borders the town line for Gorm, Hope and Hopewell. So it's right in the corner of the, the town of Canandaigua. I'd like to call it the, the southeastern gateway to Canandaigua, right? So you got traffic coming up from Gorm, from the lake, headed to Canandaigua. So i- and it's probably one of the, or it is the only undeveloped parcel in, in mixed-use overlay three in this corner of the town. So we're trying to satisfy the, the town comprehensive goals of, of providing diverse residential units for people of all ages and increase the residential units in the town up to 1,300. That's what it says right in the 2020 comprehensive code. So this is going to provide 120 townhome units. It's going to pave about 2,000 linear foot of road, dedicated road in the town, and then also continue on another 1,800 linear foot of road into town of Hopewell, where there'll be nine single-family residential houses going up the, the hill on this, for this application. So mixed-use, multi-residential, single-family residential development to provide for the need of the town for diverse residential units of all ages, for all ages and, and grow the town's residential units by, they're looking for, the, the town comprehensive code is reading 1,300 units. So this will be 120 of them, or should I say 122 of them?
Okay. Well, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on the plan itself in terms of the details of the layout and all that. I think again, what the town board has asked us to, response to is, is this appropriate use? And how would we apply the mixed-use overlay to this property and for the betterment of the town? And I'm open to any, any comments the board may have at this point.
The, the zoning for this is R120, I think I heard say, or I read that.
Yeah, R120 with a mixed-use overlay, yep.
Yep. And, and the mixed-use overlay, or the, uh, what do I want to say? The potential mixed-use overlay area was along that whole Eastlake Road strip, I think right down to the Gorm line. So this is, this would be the last.
Yes.
Property, right?
I think it starts with FLCC. It goes down, down the Eastlake Road.
Yep.
And I assume all, most if not all the property is visible from the lake?
Um, no.
No?
There, you can see where the buildings are labeled. Well, the lot, there, there's, there you go. I guess the, the mobile home park isn't in the MUO, sorry. The, there's, there's six, there's a, there's a rise in the middle of the site that, that there's the six buildings, the six, well, 24 units on the uphill side of the road we shall have, should have visible or views of the lake. And then, and then the lower ones, the, oh, if he goes back to the plan there. The lower, let's see, eight.
Yeah, there's a
Sixteen, yeah.
steeper slope in the middle of the property, it looks like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. 17 how buildings on down, on the bottom side of that slope will not have the views of the lake, so six buildings will. The remainder won't.
Six buildings.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 12 buildings, well.
Well, I was going to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Those will all have views of the lake. And then the remainder will, will not.
And vice versa. The lake can look up to. And vice versa. The lake can look up the hill, on the hill. Yep, okay.
They, they're not gonna be prominent, like sitting on top of a hillside for sure. I mean, we're looking at, we, we did a little bit of a study, like how the, the view lines would be going over the roof of the, of the buildings in front of it. And I, I tell you that we're, you know, you have to stand up in the, on the first floor of the one building in order to see over the roof line to the next, so it's not like we're, we're sticking on top of a hill, you know? We're, we're just, we're just barely getting the, the views of the lake that we're looking for and for the residents there, but it's not like it's gonna be, stick out and see it from space.
Okay, how's the board feel about the, the type of use, the density? Those kind of issues, which are typical planning issues?
Chuck, this is Ryan.
Yeah, Ryan.
So for, certainly everyone knows my opinions on other projects that we've dealt with, and this, how this may be similar, but the main difference for me in looking at this project, you know, respecting our town and our, our town boards, is that this falls in the mixed-use overlay. This is one of the three mixed-use overlays that the town board has approved. And, and so this, this project sits much more comfortably with me because it sits in that mixed-use overlay compared to other projects. This land, this area has been designated to increase development in this area and encourage it. And for that reason, this is a lot easier for me to digest than other projects in the middle of rural areas that are not mixed-use overlays.
Yeah, appreciate that, Ryan. I think, I think that's well said, and, and I agree with that. Can you describe just, what are the properties, the two or three properties to the north of this?
Yeah.
If you go back to Encore or something, I can get that bigger view of what those, you know, what's, what's on those properties, just to see how this would fit in the, in that neighborhood, you will?
Yeah, so to the north is a mobile home park. Um, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that's, that's mobile homes. Primarily, other than the, the, the lakefront properties in this area i- is, you know, single-family residence, there's quite a few of them that are for, for rent. I think the three properties directly in front of these, or should I say, one property directly in front of them is, is for rent. That, that thirty, thirty-five, fifty-five, I think that's a rental unit. The, I know that the lobby or what used to be Faro's Pizza that has residential units in it, which is Kitty Corner there. Those are for rent. So I, mostly it's all, mostly single-family residential, other than the mobile home park, so.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, I think, I think this is a, this is an appropriate use of that space. Brennan says it does comply with comprehensive plan to try to develop more diverse types of housing in the area. This is, this is a good spot for that type, type of housing, so I, I'd be in support of this. Over.
Brennan, in, in the Gorm portion of the lot, is, is that, would that be conforming to their zoning with the single-family homes? With the lots sizes you propose?
Hopewell, uh, yeah.
Our skinny Hopewell, you know, Gorms, South.
Yeah, those are one-acre lots, one up the hill, or forty thousand square foot lots, typically referred to as one-acre lots. There'll be nine of them, and those will be, you know, those will be for, for development of a single-family house, houses.
Okay. So from a traffic aspect, you would have a through road from three-sixty-four up to County Route eighteen?
Um, yeah, local. I, I don't see it as, as a being a collector, it really just a connection. I don't see that you're gonna have a lot of cut-through. Uh, it'll, it'll probably be marked for thirty miles an hour. Um, you know. If you were gonna cut to eighteen, you, I'm having south on six, three-sixty-four, you would do it below the college, right? And there's not much attraction on eighteen if you go further south, so I can't see it as being a cut-through. We're anticipating two hundred cars per day split between two, two different entrances.
Yeah, again, I, I don't want to get into design, but having a tangent straight road up the hill, maybe an issue or something you can maybe think about when we get, if, if and when you get into design work.
We're, we're deep in design, so. There is a bit of a switchback in the middle of it that we, we use to realign the road into, on the Hopewell piece, so. Provides two, three hundred-foot horizontal curves.
Okay, it, it would slow traffic and it would also deter cut-throughs. Bob, any?
I have no issues on, no issues on the MOA at all, overlay. Only, I, I could talk a little bit about design, but you said not to, so I won't.
Yeah, let's not really get into that. I don't think the board's looking for, I mean, we could sort of treat it like a sketch, but it's really a rough sketch, and it sounds like
Yeah.
Brennan's already working, working on Plan B.
I got, I can update you a little bit on design things. The, we provided loop roads, private loop roads to connect along the backsides of all the units, or the north and south side of the units for fire access, so they could circulate around with, and also a few hammerheads on some of the places that we cannot connect, so that the fire access can get around it. We've, we've also, since this plan, we've adopted a footprint that we, that we're planning to use from the architect. We've designated some more stormwater facilities and, and worked on the layout, really. We've got some double-loaded private drives versus singles, which these are all showing singles, so we're doing back-to-back on, on, on the private side of things, so.
Okay. Does the board feel, it feels it wants to look at this again at our next meeting regarding the recommendation to the town board, or do you think we could move something forward at this point and give them an advisory report?
Yeah, I'd rec, I, I'm comfortable with moving forward now and supporting MUO designation for this, this lot, or this, I guess that's how you do it, right? The lot, the lot and the use, you know?
Yeah. Did Amanda have a comment at all?
No comment from Amanda. I'm in agreement with everyone.
Yeah, it sounds like we can move forward.
Okay, well, we certainly got a busy agenda next month, so let's get it off the agenda if we can. All right, well then, I don't know if it requires a formal action. How about when John? Chris Nadler speaks.
We gotta turn one off, Chris.
Oh, where did he went?
Yeah, Chris, you got two happening here, man. You got two, two Chris Nadlers.
Isn't that what everybody's always wished for?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
I would say it does not require formal action.
Okay, I was just gonna say, once John prepares the minutes, he's more or less covered a lot of our thoughts. I'll take a crack at it, doing an advisory report to the board and uh, I'll send that out to, I'll send it back to John. John can distribute it to the board, and you folks can get back to John with any comments, and if you have any, then we'll get it finalized and sent over to town board to meet our obligation. Okay. Thanks, Bren.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, guys, for your time. Appreciate it. Yep.
Okay, let's double back. Let's take care of the minutes from the, a month ago, February twenty-third. I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes. Nice job, John. I think we have a second.
Bob, second.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions, concerns? If not, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Okay. Other referrals from town board. The Middle Cheshire Road and Hospital Services Corridor Active Transportation Plan. Now hopefully, everyone has read that. And is completely aware and understands what's involved. I know it's been reviewed by the Planning and Public Works Committee. It has also been reviewed by the CIC. I think it'll be the subject of a hearing in April. And if this board has any comments they'd like to make regarding the plan, now's the time to let it be known so we can get it on the record. Certainly a very extensive project in terms of what they have proposed out there. I think it was somewhat ambitious. And I know Jim Fletcher had some concerns about some of the infrastructure improvements that they intended to are they recommended be installed in terms of picket fencing and guardrails and guide rails and crosswalks and stuff like that. He was looking at it from a maintenance standpoint, as well as a, I guess, an initial capital investment involved. But I certainly opened it up to the board as to how you feel about the plan.
I was kind of like you, Chuck. I was like, wow, it, it's pretty good, how much, how much it's gonna cost and how, you know, how we're gonna, whether there's a, a whole approval referendum thing. I don't, I don't know what it's gonna take to do it. But I liked the plan. I liked what they wanted to do, particularly at the cross, crossroads to put, you know, crosswalks there with I don't know what you call easements off the sidewalks, you know, for, for
Trail and biking, you know?
Things like that, so you don't have big curbs. You gotta run, I mean, what they did, I, I liked it. I just wonder if it's ever gonna get done. That's my, that was mine.
Well, and, and to give you a little more background, I know the board, and I know with the Planning and Public Works Committee, when they reviewed, it said the same thing. And they certainly, you know, they said it's a, it's a nice, ideal way of looking at things out there. Certainly, you know, pedestrian and bike safety is an issue. It was curious, though, the number of accidents, most, if you read the report, most of the accidents were deer strikes. So fortunately, fortunately, there wasn't a lot of, you know, pedestrian or bike issues in terms of accidents occurring, so it's not like there's a big issue in terms of safety, in terms of past, the past, but as far as preventative, it certainly would, would provide preventative measures to prevent the accidents occurring to pedestrians and bikers. I think the board, they had, they got, they got the grant, a grant to do the study, and what they were intending to do was to accept the study, not endorse it, just accept the study so that the grant money can be paid and you know, La Bella can get their, their money, I think it was La Bella, you know, can get their, their payment for, for the work they did. And then they could put it sort of aside and sort of consider it in terms of other plans that the, the town looks at moving forward. Certainly it'd be something that we would have in our toolkit, if we see any applications along Middle Cheshire, to consider at least referencing that plan and looking at it. So that's, I think, the way the board wants to, to handle the study as submitted. Ryan, you had your end up?
Yeah, I liked, I liked how they partitioned the different areas off along Middle Cheshire, like, you know, they had the certain different zones. I thought that that was kind of productive to read it. I did enjoy all the history. Like you say, the deer strikes was really remarkable, and we, the only thing we could do about that is manage our wildlife populations more and encourage that, especially in the Middle Cheshire area. I did.
The deer won't use the crosswalks.
They won't, and, and on, on the, there was a couple of issues I, like, I took a look, some issue with some of the designs. I thought that they were almost too Portland, Oregon-ish. Maybe they weren't right for, do you know what I mean, Lance? Right, like, they were a little too much for our town of Canadega. But I liked the concept. I think I, I, the theme that they were going for, I thought was okay. It was just, it seemed almost so modern-ish and, and dare I say, progressive, that I didn't know how it would actually fit in that area, like, but there was a couple of issues with like where the crosswalks were, like they would have a sidewalk going, then it would be a crosswalk someplace that I thought was kind of interesting. But then they also had like recommendations even on when is it Wells, where Wells Curtis comes down into County Road sixteen, Westlake Road. They even had some good comments there about striping the, the roads, and I've always said that, you know, in our town, you know, especially like on Parrish Street Extension, how that hits Route twenty-one. If we would just stripe the lanes to guide traffic, tho- those, there was some low-hanging fruit in that plan that I think we could implement almost ri- right away. I, I thought, so, and then I did have a question for Chris Nadler about the funding. So, Chris, is it possible, and I, I guess, I don't want to open up a can of worms here, but like, would would the areas along Middle Cheshire, could they establish like a special district to tax themselves to make those improvements? Or would that be a town-wide issue to invest into that type of a corridor project? Like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to relate how the town members that don't live in that area should pay out of their tax dollars for that project, similar to why people shouldn't pay for sewers in Cheshire if they don't use the sewers in Cheshire. Do you know what I'm saying, Chris? Like, what are the funding mechanisms to make that type of a plan a reality?
And to be very clear, I have not reviewed this plan. I haven't discussed it with the town staff or town board. But off the top of my head, I would think it would be a special district funding mechanism.
Right, so that, that, that was my assumption, like, I can't imagine that, I mean, it would cost so much money for people in, in that district if they chose that they wanted those improvements, then they would pay for that rather than a town-wide coming out of our general coffers.
Yeah, that would be my assumption.
That was my assumption, so that, I mean, I just thought, I mean, it's a pie-in-the-sky plan, you know? But it's good, I think it's a good vision. I think it's a good vision for safety. Somebody was hit along that road a couple of years ago. But I, I, I enjoyed reading it. It was eighty-five pages, I think I read, or something.
I guess along, along those lines, Ryan, I'm kind of like, of all those different sectors, I would see probably the portion that's in the city, which is around the hospital. There's a lot of people, I think, that are gonna, that would walk and want to go from the hospital across the street to the medical facility, to the eye place, to the orthopedic guy. I mean, there's just a lot of medical buildings going up in that area where they would probably need that there more than they would, you know, out on the south end of, of the road, so, so, so there's some of that. And then I guess, from a, from a town of Canadega perspective, think of the town, I scratched my head and I said, geez, is, is Middle Cheshire Road the, the main drag or the, the, the main area where we need to invest in that type of safety? And I kind of think, no, I, I mean, I'm up there a lot, and I, I, I don't, I'm not there a lot, I shouldn't say that, but when I am up there, I don't see a lot of people walking in the roads. Although you go down, you know, Westlake Road, and there's people walking in the roads every single day, all twenty, you know, all day long. And so if I was a town person and I wanted to invest in safety, I'd be putting it somewhere else other than Middle Cheshire Road, but that's just, I don't know, those are my comments, but.
I, I think one of the challenges they were trying to address was getting from Middle Cheshire down to Westlake Road, because I think that was something that came up in their stakeholder meetings, that people want to be able to get down to the lake in a safe way from up top, up on the hill. And I know they're proposing a connection to the switchback down by five and twenty. They were also proposing a trail behind the homes on Lower Lane, down across the city property where the water behind the homes on uh, Lower Lane uh, down across the uh, uh, city property where the water tanks are and the, the water treatment plant. So uh, that, that was, that was a main concept. I think a lot of people had said, hey, we wanna get from Middle Cheshire down to the lake. We, we're not necessarily that concerned about uh, moving east to west or north to south, uh, in this case. Uh, or south to north, uh, on Middle Cheshire. So, you know, where do you wanna spend your money, like you said? Yeah, I'm just looking at some of my notes. Uh, I mean, the, the consultant said that uh, did not require any additional right of way to implement the plan. So fortunately, I guess the 60 foot right of way in Middle Cheshire, that everything could happen within that right of way. As he said, the traffic, there were no major accidents in terms of uh, vehicular accidents, certainly as we talked about the deer strikes. Certainly it, it addressed or talked about the intersection of 520 and Middle Cheshire and, and I just put yikes. I mean, it would require a, almost a redo of that intersection, pedestrian crossings. It would take a lot of thought and money to uh, come up with something there. Switchback trail I mentioned. The signage and the wa- the wayfinding, again, I think that's, that's a lot of fluff, but uh, certainly something that if you had the money, you could consider it. So again, as I said, I think it's, it's something that the board realizes it's kind of ambitious, the town board. And uh, they will certainly accept the plan for the benefit of uh, closing out the grant. But as far as uh, spending a lot of time in the study right now, I don't think they intend to do that. Time and money. But again, it's a good, good thing to have in our toolkit. As I said, it's something we should keep in mind as, as we look at projects along Middle Cheshire Road and say, gee, I remember that Middle Cheshire Road Study, Corridor Study. Uh, gee, could we get some more right of way dedicated as part of this project or could we require uh, pedestrian facilities to be put in? I know with the uh, Lakewood Meadows, Section 9, if you recall, we got the right of way down along uh, the frontage of Middle Cheshire off of St. James Boulevard. So that was certainly allowed for future construction of some sort of pedestrian path to tie into uh, St. James Parkway. So uh, I think enough said unless anybody else has anything to add to the discussion. Okay. Let's see, I think we're down to spend some money. Uh, letters of credit and bond releases. Uh, we have two requests from the Wegman family uh, for the Villas uh, Section 4 and Section 3. Uh, I will take a motion for both. One is in the amount of $35,463.39, which is the uh, the partial release, release number four for that section. And then uh, for Section 3, uh, it's a final release of $30,416.22. Uh, someone wants, if anybody has any questions or wants to make a motion, uh, please do so.
I'll make a motion for um, those two um, charity releases um, 13 dash 022 and 18 006.
Very good. Uh, Lance, how they making out at the Villas there? Have they uh, pretty much done the improvements?
Yeah, my understanding that it's going well. Um, the release number three has been postponed for a while because they're doing some of the um, some last minute stuff going through. Um, they were moving on four. Um, and then as part of the dedication process, cause we gotta dedicate the water main to the town. Uh, I don't know why I'm holding my hand up with the phone, but I felt like it's necessary. They are dedicating the water to the town. And so as part of that process, we're working on the record drawings and we're working on the record drawings and, and getting that stuff addressed. So uh, I don't believe there's any issues out there. Um, otherwise Chris Jensen wouldn't let me put these on the agenda for tonight. So I believe we're good to go.
Yeah, that section along uh, 520, that's the last section. They really haven't put anything above the ground yet on that.
No, most of the work has been site, site related work and infrastructure work.
Yeah, I know as far as the releases, but it just seems that, I guess, sales has slowed up out there. Okay. Uh, all right, we have a motion a second. I need a
I'll second it, Bob.
You got a second, John. Okay, thanks, John. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. They got the money. All right. We also have a request to extend uh, David Althamos's uh, approval for a, a first 90 day extension for his uh, whatever he was doing out on the sand. Is it Sands Hill Road or Sand Hill Road? It's Sand Hill Road, right? I believe. Uh, Lance, I think you had Sands Hill on the resolution.
Yeah, I see that now. Okay, thank you.
Uh, so it is Sand Hill and uh, this is his first extension. And uh, I see in the resolution, it was due to being held up by all factors that apply this, this time of year. Uh, do you have any questions? I'll make a motion that we extend it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Posed. Okay. Uh, we're getting near the end, guys. Keep up on your training. I know there's a session on communication tomorrow. Uh, one of those noon to 1:00 deals over lunch. Matt Horn is, is running the session and uh, he's a very interesting fellow to listen to. And I recommend if you haven't registered and you have the time, sign up for it. And you can have your lunch while you're listening to Matt. Uh, moving forward to uh, our next meeting, things are gonna start to pick up, folks. We're gonna, they're gonna make up for that time we lost uh, for our meeting last, last two weeks ago. So we got Metros is off the agenda. Glad we took care of that. We've got uh, subdivision on Middle Cheshire Road. That two lot subdivision that has been on and off, it's back on. Uh, we have Charles Miller on Bliss Road, a two, two-stage subdivision. We have Renee Forbes on Burnell for a subdivision. Uh, we have some new site plans, element design for Dan and Lori Hoffman. And uh, Chris, I, I saw you said that uh, you need some more information from them. It might slip to another meeting.
It might slip because the site plan didn't mark, match the architectural plans. The architectural plan showed sidewalks and staircases off the building, but the site plan didn't show it.
Okay. Well, if they get the plans in in time, the revised plans, uh, we'll listen to them. If not, we'll push it back. Albert Hollis wants to uh, build a single family home on Moran. And uh, we have a sketch plan for out on 332 uh, for that property that I've looked at probably six times. Uh, it's right next to Tom Walls. It's where they originally were gonna put a KFC. I think this board looked at a uh, request to uh, do some clearing and grubbing. It's between Monroe and uh, and Tom Walls. Uh, now they have a sketch plan for a uh, commercial industrial building. And the thing I'd like to point out there, this would be a great application of the Uptown's designs. Uh, I think uh, you could move that building way front. It would require some variances, but uh, move it way front, put the parking in the rear. The wider part of the lot is in the front, which would be very adaptable to the building. And stick the parking in the back over all those easements that run back there between gas and railroad and all that. So something to look at and I, I think it's a, a good application of uh, of Uptown. Uh, then we've got a lot of referrals from town board. Uh, make sure you look at the proposed local law change for the Center Point PUD. This is related to a request from Zbar to move their operations from further south on 332 up to a property at the corner of uh, 332 and uh, Thomas, yep, I wanna say Taylor. So uh, it would require a change of the PUD regs to uh, to do that. Uh, there's some other rather superfluous uh, requests, lighting law, having to do with uh, zero lighting or having down facing lighting. Uh, the manufactured homes law, which is something that Chris had requested related to uh, the construction of manufactured homes. Uh, but also the uh, parks and rec, uh, they are mending the uh, eliminating the, the position of a director of parks and rec. So that's coming out of the regulations or out of the, out of the law. And there's also going to be a policy related to alcohol consumption at uh, uh, at, at some of our parks. So that's uh, look those over before the next meeting. And then the 27th, it just keeps going again. And I won't get through all this at this point, cause I've been wordy enough. So uh, anybody else have anything for the good of the board? Okay, sorry for my uh, interruption. Uh, yeah, the, the power went on my laptop. It just shut down. So that was it. Down and out. I guess I had to pay my electric bill.
It's a sign, Chuck, that we're supposed to meet at the town hall for the next meetings and go back to town hall.
As soon, as soon as they give us the okay.
Is that what we're waiting for?
We're waiting for the okay from town board.
From old uh, Mr. Cuomo?
Well, I, I, I think the executive order expires the end of this month. So unless he renewed it, if, unless he renews it, it's town board is in a position to uh, go back to live, but, but it is, it's ultimately their call.
It's, it's so, is that, is that the, the policy? We are at the direction of the town board or is it the, the State Department of Health?
Mr. That's such a simple question. I'll ask Chris the answer. Chris?
The answer is the allowance for complete Zoom meetings is at the authorization of executive order and the early executive order from the governor. The town board has adopted uh, certain policies that endorse that and allow for that. Planning board allows video attendance at meetings pursuant to its own policies for video attendance, which should probably be revisited at some point soon. Because if the executive order isn't renewed, then we can't have complete Zoom meetings.
So we should plan to, right, as of right now, without any further action, we should plan to be at, hold our next meeting in the town hall.
No, I, I honestly wouldn't presume to tell you what, what's gonna happen on that.
Cause it
Chris Jensen, do you have any insight on whether that's gonna get extended?
My, my insight is I don't know about the extension, but I know that, I mean, we still have to do the six foot spacing and all that stuff. So based on the, the occupancy of the room and everything like that, we'll have to figure it out as the, as thing changes every day.
Yeah, I thought it went down to three feet, actually, just like this morning or something.
That was in schools or something that's gonna be allowed. I, I don't know where we're at.
You know, if you guys want, like, I know I, I'm vaccinated and I recognize that some people are still at risk. I mean, if, if it helps to satisfy a policy, we, Chuck, I'd be willing to entertain like a hybrid set, you know, where a couple of us go in and then a couple of us can still be on Zoom, you know what I mean? Like, if that helps make people more comfortable.
I don't even think it's that. It's probably have to do with the fact that the audience itself would need to be spaced as well.
Yeah. I mean, maybe, maybe Zoom is that. I mean, this is, this might change the world. So I mean, maybe we need to look at this. Um, as Chris Nadler said, like, let's revisit this. I think it would be fantastic if people could attend our planning board meetings from their homes and listen in and watch us. I think that this is a fantastic media, but that's a discussion for later on.
Well, and I think uh, moving forward, if we do reconvene in person as a board, I think we're still gonna have to allow for the option of the uh, audience to uh, zoom in to be able to tie in. Cause some people just probably don't wanna be in that environment for whatever reason. Either they haven't had their vaccine or they just feel uncomfortable being with people. They don't know what their health practices are. So.
Honestly, if they're not presenting.
Probably gonna continue to zoom in. Just, it saves the town money on travel time.
I'm sorry, Chris. Uh, how's it save the town money?
Otherwise I'd be billing you for the time I'm sitting in my car.
Yeah, but, but really, but the, but that's a wonderful, wonderful point. Like, we don't, Chris may be able to just zoom in all the time and, and, and maybe even Lance. I mean, do you know what I mean? Like if we're in the town hall, I think that there's a lot of value I, to, to talking person to person with each of you.
Yeah, there's body language and, yeah, all that, yep.
I like looking at plans with Gary over here and see what he's pointing to. And then he's pointing there and the, there's a lot of interaction that kinda, we don't have to ask questions to communicate via this, this little box right here. And I miss you guys. Kinda wanna hug John Rorbatella. I kinda wanna get, get, come right in on you, John. You know, uh, but that's kinda, I, I'm, I'm eager to get back face to face. So that's my point. I, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting if you want.
I want it. I want a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Everybody, good to see you all.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris, Chris, John, Lance.
Bye, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Good night. Good night, guys.